Hi, Thomas.
Hi, Thomas Reeser.
This song is where I was supporting the Constitution of the United States.
This song is where I was supporting the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith in the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith in the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the government is established in the United States.
And if the government is established in the United States.
And in this state under the authority of the people.
And in this state under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform.
And I will faithfully and partially and justly perform.
The duties of sergeant and the duty of sergeant.
All the duties of sergeant from the Rockford County Department of Public Defense. According to the best of my abilities, so we got.
This song is where I was supporting the Constitution of the United States.
This song is where I was supporting the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith in the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith in the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the government is established in the United States.
And if the government is established in the United States.
And in this state under the authority of the people.
And in this state under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform.
And I will faithfully and partially and justly perform.
I have to say something about Rob's Shanderson. I happen to know from friends of mine, I've never bought anything, but in a different world, in a different place, I encounter his professionalism and compassion. And it's, we are so lucky to have him along with everybody out here. So I just had that thought, you know, I'm beautiful, but um, it's kind of, thank you.
I'm Rob's Shannon.
I'm Rob's Shannon.
This song is where I was supporting the Constitution of the United States.
This song is where I was supporting the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith in the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith in the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will be established in the United States.
And the government is established in the United States.
And in this state under the authority of the people.
And in this state under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform.
And I will faithfully and partially and justly perform.
Congratulations to all of you. Um, we have a great department and hopefully you guys can maintain that greatness. Um, we'll also take a few minutes to allow you to leave because I know you do not want to stay with us. We're very.
Takes us to our next piece of business, uh, proclamation constitution. Whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the two hundred and thirty-sixth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Whereas public law nine one five guarantees the issuing of the proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America that is dated September seventeenth through September twenty-third as constitutional. You know, therefore, I, James Riley, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the Council of Roxbury, the County of Roars and State of New Jersey, we hereby proclaim this week of September seventeenth through twenty-third as constitutional and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. Uh, Sue and Ken, what's wrong with you?
Anything you'd like to say, please? That's the problem. It's good.
No, I just wanted to say, yes, uh, Constitution Week starts next Sunday, the seventeen, or seventeenth to the twenty-third, and we need to go back to our Constitution. So if you need a copy, I'd be happy to give you one. So let me know. But we thank you very much, Roxbury Township, for honoring and doing the proclamation. And we appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Uh, takes us to Roxbury Art Alliance. Um, John, I know we talked about, uh, will we move the sign or have you a second?
Yeah, it's actually, we're gonna move it. I know Jean's here tonight, Jean Water, and maybe Smutterco is from, from the Arts Alliance. So there, she's certainly here to answer any questions. But, um, you know, within the last year or so, you know, Investors Bank was, I believe, just purchased by Citizens Bank. And, um, so Arts Alliance certainly wants to recognize Citizens Bank is their, is the sponsor of the theater. And I think they were talking about quite for, for a few years now relocating the sign because their primary entrance to the theater is the senior center. On occasion, I think, they'll use social services primarily to the senior center. And it's not the, I'm gonna call it the old entrance where the old Investors Bank sign is. So they've been working on this and they came up with a, you know, with a sign plan that, um, we asked them to prepare so the council could see what that potentially would look like. They provided a rendering for the council to consider. It shows the signage also close to where the senior center entrance is. And, um, I think it complements the existing sign pretty well. And, and Jean did confirm, even though the coloring and the rendering looks a little bit different, then the coloring we use for the black, for the blue background, it will be the same as the senior center background. So the signs are, are consistent, um, on the building. So that's what she's interested in doing and looking for the, you know, direction from the council. If that would be, you know, to be acceptable to, to forward with that.
Uh, and Councilor, Councilor?
Yeah, just a question, I guess, for, for attorney. Uh, we had an agreement in place, um, with investors that we signed. Maybe, uh, here's your, um, we have, uh, facility that we have. Are we gonna have to obey that agreement for the new needs, um, surprise, do we have to modify that agreement?
I'm gonna have to look at it because of the, we have my interest in such. There's a provision in with Jim, about you having the benefit of looking. We did look, and they were pulling that agreement out. And there's a provision that permits the, the bank to change its name. Um, not aside with someone else, but to, to change their name, probably thinking of the event. It would be some sort of a merger or a purchase.
I just may have one last question. I think this was answered. So the little, the round sign in the front will go away in favor of this sign that's having to put in the back? Is that the door pattern?
The sign for Investors Bank has been removed.
Okay, so it's, you're looking for it in on the back of the building? I got it, okay.
Right about the senior center. Now, if you look at the senior centers, the left is their proposed location on the wall. Wall, Mr. President?
John, same, same lease and no changes? Because there's some term already been done on the lease, it's the same lease.
Say, nothing changes that like?
Same time and everything.
No, nothing changes. I forget where we are in the process of that. I think that was renewed maybe in twenty nineteen. I don't recall the exact date in twenty twenty. There's no change for that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Tom?
I did go before the spoke senior groups to run this by them and neither group had any problem.
Thank you very much. Uh, Robert, just to formalize to get a motion to, off last.
I'll move, I'll move.
Off seven.
Oh, Jean, a second. All hands.
Aye, aye.
There you go, Jean. You got your sign.
So I think, Jean, we have one more announcement about the RIAA and your volunteer meeting?
Oh, yes, we have a meeting for anyone interested in becoming a volunteer on Saturday morning at nine thirty in the senior center. All are welcome. Thank you.
Okay, taking us to approval of minutes, June twenty-seventh.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Uh, any discussion? Welcome, please.
Deputy Mayor Robert.
Yes.
Councilman Carey.
Yes.
Councilman Crowley.
Yes.
Councilman De Filippo.
Yes.
Councilman Hall.
Yes.
Councilman Patillo.
Yes.
Mayor Riley.
Yes.
Well, that takes us to our first public portion. When anybody in the public wish to be heard on any issue, please raise your hand. Yes, ma'am? Hi, Anya. Hello? That's you? Just give us your name and address from the record.
My name is Kathy Ritchie. I live at four Limburg Lane in Suckasana. Um, I've been a resident for thirty years. My kids, uh, I raised my kids here. They graduated from Roxbury High School. They're Roxbury Marching Gales. And we're both retired, my husband Jim and I. We live in, uh, we plan to live in our house for as long as possible. Um, one of the delights of being retired is that we've taken more advantage of some of the cultural experiences in the area, including the Roxbury Arts Alliance. Um, we find that there is high quality entertainment, terrific talent that's being cultivated, and it's practically at our doorstep. We've come to realize we don't have to necessarily travel to New York City to experience theater, concerts, and the visual arts that we enjoy. A weekend night for us might include, uh, going to one of our local restaurants, Sushi Hana or Anthony's, and then we just dash on over to the, um, Citizens Bank Theater. Uh, this year, we, uh, took advantage of the Best of the Eagles, the eighties revolution concerts, and of course, a wonderful production of Sweet Magnolias. I'm particularly excited to see that Peter and the Wolf is coming. That was a favorite story for myself and for my kids. And perhaps they, it encouraged them to, um, study music as they got older. I, I realized as I was putting this together that my daughter Sarah received a scholarship from the Arts Alliance in Visual Arts ten, twelve years ago. The Roxbury Arts Alliance is a gift to our town. It is a gift given to us by the dedicated volunteers who do all the hard work it takes to keep the theater going and to develop, to develop programming relevant to its audience. I thank Jean Potter, Cindy Donaldson, Sarah Proggio, Jen Schmidt, who are all leaders in that organization. It gives amateur and professional musicians, actors, and visual artists an opportunity to showcase their incredible talents. It gives members of the community an opportunity to relive something memorable or experience perhaps something entirely new. And best of all, it gives us a time to be together with neighbors, friends, and even strangers, to forget the outside world for a while, maybe cry a little, sing, dance, and cheer all in one evening at the theater. I look forward to seeing more great things like the sign that was approved today for the Roxbury Arts Alliance. And I hope the council and our citizens will give it the support it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you for recognizing the good work of your lineups. Anybody else in public, Mr. Smith, uh, Mr. Anderson?
Sue Anderson, fourteen Kimball Avenue, Suckasana. First off, thank you for approving the sign for the RIAA because hopefully now people will know what door to go in to go to the performances. So thank you so much. The other thing is, I just wanted to say, there are so many things that go on in Roxbury Township. We can't go to them all. But on Sunday, there was a performance of Benjamin Franklin, a wonderful impersonator, uh, from Philadelphia. He actually does walking tours in Philadelphia. It was phenomenal, um, and it was something put on by the Roxbury Library, Friends of the Library, the Roxbury Historic Trust, and the Roxbury Historical Society. And actually, our Fairmont Chapter of the DAR was there handing out constitutions to everybody. But it is something that it's nice to see that we have wonderful things. And he was very educational and told you more about him's, uh, what Benjamin Franklin was like. So it was a great performance. Thank you.
Hopefully, it's a tradition that keeps going. I missed the first one, but the last two, I stayed for the whole thing yesterday. On Sunday, I can stay. But I did made him introduce one. It's a very, it's fantastic. And fairly well attended. But I'm pretty fine. Uh, this one too. Yeah, I see, actually, something was still walking in. Thank you. Yes, it wasn't. Anybody else in public, wish you heard of anything, please raise your hand. Mr. Smith?
Jean Potter, eleven Brittany Road, Suckasana. And I, from the Arts Alliance, thank you for approving the new sign. It will help patrons find us, so that will be great. We started our season with a wonderful band Saturday night called We May Be Right. And the audience would not let them go. Nine thirty, they're trying to wrap up. Audience called for three more songs. They played until after ten o'clock. And everyone had a great time. And we were also at Suckasana Day on Saturday. And, uh, the Peter and the Wolf event that Kathy mentioned will be on Saturday at four P M. It's a great family show, wonderful to bring children to attend. And then we'll follow in October with our musical Drowsy Chaperone. It was a show that ran on Broadway and people seemed to love it. I can't wait to see that one. So I hope to see some of you at some of our events.
Thank you, Jean. Anybody else in the public wish, you heard, please raise your hand? Senior, not postponed portion. Takes us to reports and council liaisons, representatives, council committee is a new and old business. And I will start with, Mr.?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, to start, Mayor, thank you for the moment of silence for, uh, for Charlie Albon. Charlie's gonna really be missing now. So many people have said that. And I had the, uh, chance to talk to Deputy Mayor, um, a little bit about this. And to be quite honest with you, with Charlie, he had such large amounts of institutional knowledge that it was just extraordinary. And to me personally, when I looked at guys like Charlie Albon and Alvin Poppy, he just learned the historical basis behind decisions that were made in the past in Roxbury Township. What's great about that is he really helps you to make better decisions on a going forward basis. So, uh, for those reasons and, and others, which are obviously instantly served as a prior work, the man was extraordinary. And I will miss gaining more knowledge, uh, from that particular, uh, individual. He really was a staple within the township. I know Jackie and I talked about that and, uh, I think you might have.
Do you want to be silent?
Please.
First, I want to say, I was looking here that I want to personally thank Charlie's family for sacrificing Charlie's life away from them for sixty-five active years of service on the Roxbury Fire Department. He was a mentor and a teacher to so many, including myself. I became a better human being and a better human today because of Charlie and all the talking. One of the things he always said was, Jackie, when you, you go one way to a call and always go home a different way. And because of that, I learned all of the streets of Roxbury Township. Now you never go home the same way you came. Um, one of the greatest parts of knowing Charlie for the past, let's say, seven years was being able to tell them, I was gonna be a councilwoman. And they were so excited, they sent me flowers. Charlie and Ellen, his wife, um, I love them so much. They have given so much to the township of Roxbury in, in service. Charlie's life was all about service himself, which goes offhand with our Rotary Club. Charlie did nothing but serve Roxbury Township and the people. And I just want to thank him for that. Oh, and we would also, we're gonna give Street Lake though. It was supposed to be sooner rather than later, but things happened. Thank you.
Yes, uh, I'm sure he'll be all right here.
I'm sorry, I have a question. Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yes, to be more thankful, Mr. Mayor, um, some praise needs to be placed on the police department for their actions on the county ownership. So I'm gonna leave it up to you, Deputy Mayor. Wait until we get out here, here, discussions. But, uh, great work, Chief. Very much appreciated. Speediness like what you got there really saved quite a bit. Obviously, we'll sign up here. Deputy Mayor, it's a sunny day. I'm sure everybody is gonna wanna talk about that. Turned out really well. Big thanks to Rod Warner, Dean, for, for putting this together on an hourly basis. Lots of tents, lots of people, lots of happy people. I'll let the others, uh, talk about that in more detail. See what else I got here. Uh, we had the, uh, the main kickoff class in for soccer, so we saw a gazillion people in town over the last two weeks. There's a reason for that. We had a hundred and one teams from all over the state in New Jersey participating in that. Went off, pretty much went out of hitch. Uh, I wanna thank the DPW, did a great job, um, with that. Also, uh, police were there. And, uh, you know, Harks, uh, did also did a wonderful job. So that turned out very well. We also had a very, very big internet, uh, track and field event, um, at the, uh, at Worship Lake, which drew hundreds if not thousands of runners. I'll let Sean talk about the whole team. Also, this Thursday, we have Bad for Hunger, um, at ShopRite. Anybody's interested, uh, I'll be there. And, uh, more EC meetings and rec meetings coming up. And I'll stop there, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Tough week for Charlie. And yesterday with nine eleven, I just wanna bring up the nine eleven, uh, losing people, two thousand one. We're still losing people twenty-two years later. And, uh, I think it's been noted that it surpassed the original number of people that had died. This is still something that I saw on the news the other day where one lady who lost her, I believe, was a son, said, "I love it more than just a page in, in a history book." That people really understand it. And as I see today, very important. You know, we live in a community where, where people were in nine eleven. Uh, we live in an area where we all get touched by people who were there at the time, whether it was policemen, policemen, or just people in the buildings. So I just wanted to bring up, it, it's a tough, tough week. Did participate in the Lake Commission meeting last night. There's a lake cleanup on November the fourth. I understand our DPW is gonna be involved in helping remove trash and stuff killing the bees, was, I believe, at, at the meeting. The Lake Commission, uh, took in a amount of twenty-two hundred yards of weeds. One of the things they've done this year, uh, that they've been planning to do for many years, is they de-watered the weeds. Where we used to have trouble throwing out the weeds. Now that we de-water them, it's less going to, to the county. And we've been able to get rid of a lot more weeds. Also, the, um, I'll let Sean talk about some of this, but, uh, the police were there last night, state police, the Sheriff's Department, and I think it was called Patcon Police Department, uh, and gave a presentation of things that they did in and around the lake. Uh, also that they have generated, uh, videos on safety, uh, that will be given out to people that rent boats and be able to get QR codes at different arenas. To explain to people just what's taking about, uh, if it sounds simple, you get out in a boat, it gets kinda crazy, especially on weekends on that lake. So I, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Matt.
Thank you. Um, I wanna say thank you to the Roxbury PD and the DPW for their help on Charlie's, during Charlie's services, shutting down Main Street, and that he was not easy. Um, also, I wanted to mention that on Sat- Sunday, Saturday, it was, uh, ShopRite. They held a, uh, fill a tr- a bus with food event. So Eva was there from Social Services, Janet wasn't there. They were able to fill, Sunday, Sunday, an entire school bus and several.
And three cars.
And three cars from ShopRite. So that is really great. It's a good shop, ShopRite. And that's all.
Thank you. Mr. B?
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor? Yeah, yeah.
Um, just very quickly, Mayor, I, I mean, I didn't know what Charlie was part as well as his other. But it was something his son told us, uh, after he passed was, that just explains the whole relationship with the community. Apparently, and he wasn't doing well in high school. Jack was there. And he looked up at his son at one point and, and hadn't been speaking to anybody, but looked at his son and asked, "What's going on with that Hercules truck?"
He said that to me. He did. He actually said, "Hey, Jackie, what's going on with Hercules?" And then I explained, and then after that, "What about the Black River Project and my help?" On his deathbed.
Huge home in the community, uh, that's all, Mayor, thanks. Thank you. Mr. Phil?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mayor, Council, you may remember a few months ago, we approved an application for a grant to the Highlands to, uh, conduct this study of the landing channel. Uh, that grant had been approved and the work on that will start September fourteenth. Uh, what that study will do is they're just gonna, um, determine where, what, how much sediment to dig out the bottom of, of the channel there to reallocate it into the floating island of the Earl Islands located there, uh, which will, uh, open up that waterway for, um, for boating. Um, so that's, I'm looking forward to that project to, to really open up that end of the water. Also, it's a sunny day. Was another great success this year. I'm always happy to be there. It's always nice to see all, that everyone come out. Uh, so a big thank you to Rod Warner, the library, all the volunteers that. So, a big thank you to Radwan, the library, all the volunteers, the employees, the DPW workers, the vendors, the scouts, the bands, residents, guests, I don't know the groups I'm missing, all the Morris County, but one hope that came that just makes the day, an amazing day. Looking forward to next year already. So, it was a fun day. And the rain held out, which was great. Also, yeah, I was at the Lake of Patcon Commission meeting yesterday. Yeah, there was a report from the state police, the Morris County Sheriff's and the Patcon Police Department. I had the privilege of partaking in those safety videos back in July. Thank you, Mayor, for putting me on the fire for that one. Those videos are planned to come out, you know, in the next few months or something. There's no real timeline on those. Because they're timeless, they continue to go, you know, on for a few years. But it's just a great collaboration between the three departments to joint mission on that water to really just make it safer for everybody. It's a real concern out there, because without them, it gets a little hectic. Gets a little hectic out there. So, I'm always happy to see all three, well, all three departments out there, you know, on any given day. Lake of Patcon Foundation, with the five-foot drawdown of Lake of Patcon this year, they'll do the lake cleanup. Signups for that can be found on the Lake of Patcon Foundation website. I think last time, they said they had about four hundred volunteers come out and help, and there was tons and tons of garbage pulled out of there. I forget the number of tires, but, you know, a significant amount of car tires somehow find their way in there. Also, on the foundation, you can find information on the lake loop that's coming up October first, and the fires walk at Hudson Farms, October's set, so there's some good activities the foundation has. Chief, thank you. Great job out there at Kawasaki, you know. It's, we have such a great department here, and to see the new, you know, the promotions and the new patrolmen coming in, you know, you run a great, a great department. So, thank you.
I didn't know it was the chief before this one.
We have a great tradition of chiefs here, including this one. So, thank you. That's why I got there. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just very quickly, and congratulations to our patrolmen and our sergeants who have helped promote it. Second, had a great time, it's a sunny day. Won't beat that, yeah. And my counterpart at the Board of Education wanted me to mention that we had a visit from the Jets- yesterday. The offensive center came and was working with our special needs children over at the high school, and introduced a, introduced a curriculum called Able in schools, and followed by New York Jets Day. So, we'll take your important feedback from that over to our next meeting.
I surely wanna hear more about that.
Yeah.
Oh.
Thank you.
That's it?
One of our Roxbury High School seniors was featured on the Jets-
Jumbotron.
Jumbotron. Jared, Erwin. Yeah?
Look at, oh, sorry. They, it's a pressure line down there. They're asking too. Our marching gals, cheering gals, and fighting gals have our half off to a spectacular season. Albon, everybody at the high school looks great this year. The football team is great out there.
Big win.
Huge win. November games Thursday, Thursday, I'm worried. It's less more second.
Of course, I buy students, fans, and regulars. You know, it's-
They're doing a great job. Yes.
Anything else that anybody missed? Yeah, moving on. Yes, I would like to touch on a few things. Kamisaki Dealer, one of your officers grabbed me at the market the other day on a sunny day. Just went on literally hundreds of thousands of dollars in goods were being prepared to be taken off that site. I've heard numbers as much as four hundred thousand dollars, and he's not, so that's how big of a deal that was. I think, I didn't see it this evening, but I heard Channel Seven News was down here to do a story on it. Organized retail crime is a real thing. It's not just happening in San Francisco or Los Angeles. It's national. I feel with my business, it's everywhere. And so, it's great that police officers that are willing to take that time and donate to it. That's helping surrounding departments as well. I heard a lot of guys came in early, a lot of guys stayed late to get through it. Fortunately, the bad guys weren't actively bad guys. They were pretty well maintained. Hopefully, they're still in jail, but you never know. No, I didn't think so. That's one of the problems with our system right now. It's not at the front lines, it's after the front lines. Hopefully, somebody eventually will have to see it and do something about it, because it's not sustained. My, 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 thank, great job for the officers and getting this, as I said, thank you very much. So, the sunny day was great. They can tell a bunch of stories, but you guys covered them all. Again, begged for hunger at ShopRite, it's eleven to one on Thursday. Unfortunately, the staff here won't be there. There are three members will be, and I believe Toby Hooper will be there as well. John, has there been any action with the Highlands Council? Any ideas, any discussions?
Nothing set up yet. I think we are in a position, though, that we can start working with them whenever we're, whenever we're ready. I think they're ready for us, so it's just a matter of us getting, I think, organized what we wanna do and, you know, work with them, who we wanna work with from a consulting standpoint. But they're certainly ready to go.
Yeah, I have a couple ideas on that. One's a planner, one's, I'd work with that, Highlands. But this is something we wanna get moving sooner or later. It came up during their housing committee meeting. The club, maybe the housing committee meeting. Continue as a committee to handle the color aspect. I said no, because I didn't wanna do it. But I think we are, you know, we do not have an issue with that. So, let's watch my spot before we run through it. Please. So, let's get something going on that, let's get some emails going on that.
Sounds good.
Another housekeeping item, swim and sports club event, we had side golf on it. It was incorrectly, the dates were incorrect, and it's gonna take place on nine sixteen to seventeen. You should see a email for that, any issue with that, anybody? You know, Chief did not have an issue with that. I have a couple of appointments to make, some open positions for the library board. Pam Smith, she was recommended by the board.
I think a lot of people know Pam in town. She's really the force behind the Chamber of Commerce. And does a perfect job there. She also serves the trails committee, Rockford Holiday Committee. She's a Girl Scout leader too. Really terrific person, sort of committed to the library. Rhonda, Ellie is, I think she's highly recommended, and she's been vetted as chair of the council.
Thank you. And also, these are both Mayor's appointments to the environmental commission. I'd like to appoint Mike Davenport, who was recommended from the liaison at all in the committee. Anything you wanna add on to that, John?
No, Mike's a great one. He really is. Comes with just a ton of environmental experience. We have a very, very strong environmental commission, a lot of environmental scientists, people who work in the field, and Mike's an add to that. He's a really great one, and showing up at all meetings, so.
His resume is quite impressive, his volunteer management. Thank you. I believe that takes care of everything I needed to deal with. John, you have anything?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Anything, put the attorney's office in the door. You agree?
Thank you. We have one resolution that needs to be pulled tonight.
Yes, I have that running.
Okay.
And it's Resolution two fifty-three.
Yes, and you may say it again, it just needs to be-
Yeah. Anybody else?
No.
See, it's not been a little long. Man has requested, we have nothing to do. Introduction of proposed ordinances, we have non-german adoption warrants as our second meeting, we have not introduction and adoption of resolutions.
Mayor, I would like to please move two thousand oh two three bis two forty-six. And one two oh two three bis two three seven. Two fifty-four with the extraction out of that at two fifty-three.
Correct.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mayor.
Second, second. Resolution the second, discussion I did is wrong. Mr. Hall?
Just, just one item. I'm very, very happy to see that we're moving forward with two forty-seven. It might be just ask, Mr. Hall, you know, you can just imagine, you know, the amount of people that use that spot. So, once you know what those dates are gonna be approached, you can put some of that on the digital board out there so we can notify people in advance that this is coming. It's a busy area.
Well, I think everybody's received many complaints about the area, including Mr. Blood. So, I'm sure he'll be the happiest as he can be.
Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Same resolution. Mr. Blood, we have a tentative start date.
Right now, it's last week of September, first week of August. Last week of September, first week of October. That's the window, depending weather, senior meetings.
On Thursday.
You will be partisan at that.
We will be partisan, stay away from it. Any other comments on resolutions? See, none, we'll call it.
Deputy Mayor Oliver?
Yes.
Councilman Carey?
Yes.
Councilman Crowley?
Yes.
Councilman De Filippo?
Yes.
Councilman Hall?
Yes.
Councilman Patillo?
Yes.
Mayor Riley?
Yes. First of all, changes, we have non-communication packages on September first and eighth. Anybody have anything to give your listeners? See, none? That takes us to public portion. Everybody in the public portion here on any issue, please raise your hand. Yes, sir. None, man in the front.
Robert Costfam's wrote, two items. First, I wanna thank Sean Patillo for putting me in touch with Brett Douglas regarding the purchase of two benches by the VFL. At the meeting, I did get them to approve forty-four hundred dollars for two benches, contingent upon those benches being installed at the memorial. So, I'm gonna talk to Brett tomorrow, see if we can get this set up. So, it'd be very nice to have a couple of benches for, like, Memorial Day, people would be able to sit there. So, that's, that's a good item. The second item for the night, a little history for Roxbury Township regarding nine eleven. On nine twelve, the Roxbury Seniors Club had a boat trip scheduled to go around New York City, the Hudson and the East River. Why it wasn't canceled, I have no idea. But we did show up at Liberty State Park and found the trip wasn't available to us. So, they loaded us on a bus, took us over the GW, down the West Coast Highway, and they loaded us on a boat there somewhere. And we pulled out into the middle of the Hudson, and we could see the smoke from the towers and all that. We were there, actually, the very next morning after the incidents. And we did actually go and do the trip up the East River. What, as I say, I don't know why, but it was a memorial.
I think right after that, everything was shut down.
Yeah. So, Roxbury was there for the East River. History. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public portion here on any issue? Please raise your hand. See, none, we'll close the public portion. Do we have an executive session? We have none for the executive session. For the chairman, please. All in favor? Thank you all very much. Thank you all to come, have a great day.